Evening, Madam Mayor.
Evening, Madam Mayor.
I'd like to remind everybody, in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being recorded and obviously livestreamed, not lime-streamed. I think that sounds like a drink. Um, anyway, acknowledgement of country and prayer of council and affirmation will be read by the CEO, Dr Eddie Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. The acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabarogan, the Darug Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darug Nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you for that. Do we have any apologies? No apologies? condolences? None? Confirmation minutes?
Move that way, Madam Mayor. Second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, councillor Shelton and councillor Haddid. Thank you. Declarations of interest. Has anybody got any declarations of interest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
What is it?
In relation to item conf O three, I've had business dealings in the past, or at least I think I have, with some of the individuals and organisations referred to in that item. Uh, pecuniary, not for me, no, but possibly for people I know. So I'll call it pecuniary, I'll call it significant, and I won't be involved in the discussion of the item.
Okay, thank you. Any others? None? Okay, thank you. Uh, public forum, as you'd all know, there's been sixty submissions received regarding NOM O three and they've been forwarded to the councillors. Presentations, I don't have any on agenda list. Uh, planning and compliance, the first one's on page fifty-one.
Happy to move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Second it.
In that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Caliander.
May I just, uh, a request, you know, we don't have to put it in the NOM, but I guess as the Areatropolis develops, um, I know with some of the submissions, they've proposed alternate names. Could we sort of keep them on a list somewhere so that when subdivisions and further development around the Areatropolis takes place, that we can throw those up as suggested names? Um, if we're going to use one landholder's name, let's, let's use all of them or as many of them as possible.
Yeah, often the landowner asks part of the sale conditions that have been called after them, so that makes it a bit awkward. But yep, no worries, could do that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, sorry, put my hand up, by the time I get it up.
Sorry, there it is, it's up, yes.
Um, you know, the, uh, all the submissions that we received on it, was there more objections to it than what there were in approval of it?
I'll have to ask for that, that information. I'll ask the CEO for the correct officer.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The, the submissions weren't made directly to council, they were made to the, uh, Western Parkland City Authority. Uh, I'll ask Mr Smith if he's aware of any of the background information.
Thank you, through the CEO, the submissions that were received, um, identified in the report, there were four submissions uh, that, that were received. Uh, one objected to the name, three others suggested that Transport for New South Wales should actually rename the bypass rather than the Northern Road through Ludnam Township. Uh, so there weren't any submissions that were actually in support of the, the name, but as I said, only four submissions were received.
And, and just a follow-up question then, just to clarify, uh, is it because there were only four submissions that it wasn't taken into consideration or, you know, because we put it out there, four submissions and for people, for community, it just may not look too good when we don't, you know, necessarily take on board what they say.
Councillors, can I clarify? Because my response was based, I, I was picking up on councillor Hagerty's comments about uh, the Areatropolis consultation process. Um, is it the Ludnam, uh, uh, the Wilmington Road?
Yep.
That you're referring to, yeah, Mr Smith.
Yeah, thank, thank you through the CEO, yes, the, um, uh, when we put it out for submissions, what we tend to find is, is people lodge submissions in opposition, um, more often than not than in support. So all I can say to the councillors is we received four submissions and one of them a- a- objected to that name. The three others didn't object to the name, but what they did say is we would prefer that council didn't rename the road through Ludnam and instead look at renaming the bypass itself. We had discussed that with Transport for New South Wales uh, and Transport for New South Wales confirmed they had no intention of renaming the bypass because it's a continuation of the Northern Road from Norellan to near Windsor and therefore the road through Ludnam itself needed to be renamed.
Thank you, we took it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, um, you can put your hand down now, councillor Rhodes. Thank you very much. The next, uh, so no objections? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next item's on page sixty.
Apologies, Mayor, I need to declare an interest in this one.
Okay, is it pecuniary?
Well, it's a receiver knows and nothing's happening with it, but one of, uh, a property, property I own is actually noted in this report. So I'll, I'll leave and declare.
All right, I'll just put that in my notes here.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any, um, opposition? None, I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. Would someone fetch councillor Chitty back, please? He's got to walk backwards. All right, moving on to the next item, which is on page seventy-two.
Move it that way, Madam Mayor.
Oh, you're everywhere. Moved by councillor Haddid and seconded by?
Happy to second it.
Councillor Hall, the two Hs. Any opposition? None, I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. There's some added, added voices there. Um, the next item's on page eighty.
Exactly, Madam Mayor.
Second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton and thank you councillor Haddid. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. The next item's on page eighty-three.
Move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor, councillor. Councillor Shelton, seconding, yes councillor Rhodes.
No, no, I was seconding.
Just second, okay. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. Um, next item's on page one O one.
Happy to move, Madam Mayor.
Oh, second it, Madam Mayor.
Just a question in regards to that one, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Um, the, what, the election's December fourth, our first meeting's two months later. Who, who, who's running the shop in those two months?
I would suggest the, whoever the declared mayor is after the twenty-third of December.
Okay, do we need to move anything to that effect?
Because the legislation is very clear and the regulations.
Okay, and then, uh, in that interim period between the fourth and the twenty-third, you will continue?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Unless they move the declarations for, you know, forward, which who knows what they will do. We've had a fun run, haven't we? All right, so, uh, moving along, uh, we've had a mover and a seconder, any objections? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. Next item's on page one O five.
Happy to move that, Madam Mayor.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Yard and seconded councillor Yard and moved by councillor Rhodes. Any objections?
Just a point, Madam Mayor, in relation to the motion on page one O seven and having regard to developments in the last forty-eight hours, the mover and the seconder might like for it to say local government, New South Wales advocate for state and federal governments to adopt twenty thirty and twenty fifty climate targets and actions. Uh, just to put some emphasis on that and bearing in mind that there has been developments in relation to a twenty fifty climate target. So it's just adding twenty thirty and twenty fifty, uh, between adopting climate targets.
I see a lot of heads nodding, so I suggest that can be added with no trouble.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any objections? I'll put it.
Just, just a question, Madam.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead. You're breaking up councillor.
And sorry, sorry, I can't pull my hair. Just, just on the motion on page one O seven, LG New South advocate for state and federal governments to adopt climate targets and action including net zero emission targets consistent with international standards. Haven't they already done that?
I'll ask the CEO to comment on that.
Uh, Mr Humphreys.
Thank you, through the CEO, um, I think this is more of a question for, um, Director of Infrastructure in relation to the climate targets and the Climate Action Plan.
Uh, uh, through the CEO, uh, so the federal government, as we know, the Australian government has just pledged uh, uh, to, to target of net zero emissions by twenty fifty. Councillor Shelton, the point councillor Shelton is making is that we also include twenty thirty in that and, and, and that, that makes a sense, a bit, a bit of sense in terms of, uh, looking at this holistically over the longer period of time. So, uh, that would, uh, make sense to include that in this, in this motion.
And I think councillor Chitty didn't actually hear that. He said he was broken, breaking up at the time.
Is that okay councillor Chitty?
Thanks, Mayor, thanks all.
Okay, wonderful. I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. Next item's on.
Can I be marked as voting against, Mayor, please?
Yes, certainly. Councillor Haddity is voting against it. Um, next item's on page one two four.
Move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Seconded, councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Rhodes. Any objection? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. Next item is on page one two nine.
I have two questions, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead councillor.
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the relevant officer, uh, the two questions which may turn out to be related. One is in terms of the proposed lease compulsory acquisition of a lease, where it may turn out for construction works. The relevant law shows quite a lot of trees and I'm wondering whether the terms of the lease since it's to aid with construction work is going to involve the loss or degradation of those trees. And the related point is whether there's been consultation with the immediate adjacent residential landowners. And they may particularly have a view if the trees, which appear to act as a noise buffer amongst other things, are to be affected by the terms of the lease.
I'll ask the CEO to find the appropriate person.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Mr Morgan is Mr Milicich online.
Uh, he is Eddie, so through the CEO, I'll, I'll hand to John Milicich regarding, um, if there any consultation has been had and/or the situation with the, uh, the vegetation, but, uh, John, are you able to, um, assist in that one, in that regard?
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors, uh, through the CEO. I did, um, ask, uh, Transport for New South Wales that question. Um, their response was that their community consultation was undertaken as part of the EIS and that any trees that would be affected would be replaced as identified under the EIS. Um, I'm happy to go back, um, and seek further clarification if required.
Madam Mayor, is, is, if I may, is there any indication of how many trees will be affected? Is this going to be a case where we lose one mature tree and get four small trees that are all going to die anyway, uh, by way of replacement?
Um, I'll ask the CEO.
Thank you.
And I'll ask Mr Milicich, if he can respond.
Um, through the CEO, uh, can I take that on notice and, uh, I'll go back through Transport New South Wales. Um, their initial response was it'd be a replacement alike for like, but having dealt with statutory authorities, um, I'll seek clarification on that response.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, councillor Rhodes, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one following on there from what Geoff was saying, if I may. When you say like for like, uh, they're taking out mature trees as, uh, Geoff mentioned, so, uh, it can't ever be that way and I think that, uh, as a bare minimum, it should be replaced as I think Geoff mentioned. One tree be replaced by four trees. But I still have a problem because they're not mature trees and that's twenty years until we get back to that sort of, um, uh, same sort of situation. So, you know, I, I, I'm most interested in, in that particular aspect.
Thank you councillor, I think the staff member said he's going to get back to the authority and request absolute clarification of what they're doing. But he has been, from what he's told, is told they'll be like for like, so that means maturity for maturity. Um, councillor Shelton, no, there was one before you. Who, is that councillor Hagerty, was it?
Yes, so, um, uh, councillor Shelton asked a couple of my questions, which is good, thank you. Um, but, uh, noise control measures, so, um, I understand that the residents along that, you know, that, that are adjacent to Elizabeth Drive did actually request, uh, noise, noise walls as part of the M twelve and were knocked back. Um, I'm now concerned that not only are they not getting their, their, uh, sound walls, they, they're getting a site, you know, a side office sort of, you know, a couple of metres away that's going to be there for probably a year or two. Um, what, I guess, is there anything we can do, any protections, can we write to Transport for New South Wales um, about the potential for noise mitigation or anything like that? I imagine these guys are going to start work pretty early and move up their diesel engines and, um, I can see this being a headache for us.
Through the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to ask, uh, John Milicich, uh, to convey the concerns of council, um, and this and the previous matter, uh, to Transport for New South Wales and we'll pursue it if we need to write and, and escalate it, then we'll do that. Um, so that we get satisfactory responses.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Shelton, you had another question?
Yeah, just to follow up the, um, uh, through, um, through you, I think, to Mr Milicich. If this matter is postponed for one month, how much of a nuisance if at all does that create? Is it a problem if it's deferred for a month pending these matters that have been raised? Or can that be easily done? I'm just curious.
Through the CEO.
Uh, through the CEO, I have raised that with transport. Um, transport, given the compulsory acquisition process and they have asked us for a reduced payment period, um, would like, um, approval as soon as possible because, so seeking the commenced work, my understanding is July next year and the compulsory acquisition process will probably take six to nine months or, or ten months, um, to complete. Um, I'm happy to, um, defer it for a month and seek those clarifications.
Well, there needs to be a motion to that effect if that's the case.
Well, I'll test the water and see what happens, Madam Mayor, like whether this matter will be deferred for one month.
I'll just clarify with the CEO whether this decision can be made.
Pending, pending inquiries with Transport for New South Wales.
It, it could be deferred, Madam Mayor, for another month.
Thank you, that's all. Okay, so the motion is that this be deferred.
May I ask a question before it goes before council?
Yes, certainly. Go ahead councillor.
So just returning back to councillor Hag, uh, councillor Hagerty's point around the noise abatement and mitigation, um, from, from residents. What costs do residents have if Transport for New South Wales comes back and says no?
Through the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, I would suggest the, the most direct would be through political lobbying, councillor, um. But certainly we can, we can escalate it through written correspondence. Um, we can, we can correspond with the secretary, for example, um, to raise the issues and happy to do that, should there need a right.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Sheldon, have you got your hand up again or just forgot to put it down?
No, that's from before.
All right, thank you. Well, the motion is that this be deferred for a month to obviously find out the answers to the questions asked. Um, is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. The next item is on page one two nine.
No, it's the one we just did.
Yes, one thirty-four.
Thank you. I'm ahead of a sec. Oh, you're ahead of me. Okay, oh, one thirty-four.
Yeah, I'll move that way, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, second it, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. Was there somebody trying to speak then? Oh, sorry councillor Caliander, I see the little hand up. Did you wish?
Sorry, I think my hand up was up from the previous item.
Good, I feel better now. Okay, the next items are the committee reports.
Move it as a whole, Madam Mayor.
Move it as a whole, councillor Rhodes, seconded?
Seconded. Second it. Before, before we do that, can I just ask a question about a committee?
Yeah, sure.
Um, the minutes of the Community Safety and Crime Prevention Advisory Committee, um, maybe we should look at dropping the name there, have endorsed the actions in the minutes. I couldn't find any actions. What am I missing?
Okay, well, I'll ask the question on your behalf formally. I'll ask the CEO.
Um, I, I don't believe there are any councillor, I think that was an administrative error on our part.
Okay.
Our apologies.
So you haven't missed.
I wasted three hours reading those again and again and again, couldn't find them.
Oh dear, and you could have been doing other things. Were you reading it with a magnifying glass?
I'm thorough.
Okay, I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried.
Other question.
Yes, it was seconded, moved by councillor Rhodes and seconded by councillor Rhodes.
Okay, done.
Get the clarification in relation to that, Madam Mayor. I presume with the minutes of the intermodal committee, what we just moved was the recommendations in the book, which was not to follow some of the actions in the, in the committee.
Well, yeah, we are following the recommendations, councillor.
Just clarifying, thank you.
Moving along to questions we noticed, uh, the first one is, she says balancing on a box. Oh, it's not cooperating. All right. And this is in the name of councillor Hagerty.
No, all good, community sports back, we're all happy and active and kicking goals, literally. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next one's in councillor Hall's name.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the staff for the amount of work they did to answer those questions. I'm impressed. Uh, a job well done, thank you.
That's positive. Next one is in the name of councillor Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to thank the staff for the, uh, the questions, uh, raised and it looks like they're on to it. The only thing that I can think of is that perhaps we should raise a motion, um, that council bring back a report to council on possible COVID policy and procedures for council orders, fines and other legal matters that addresses situations where public health orders end or state or federal restrictions, because the state is now making decisions down in Victoria, uh, make it possible, make it impossible for constituents to carry out their, the orders or within the timeframes addressed in the council orders as a result of a pandemic placed restrictions. That's the motion and it's basically just a report back to council
Yep.
on a possible policy to see whether we should have that in place if this thing isn't ever going to end.
I had a feeling it's going to be our friend, but anyway. Um, all right, well, I think it's fairly clear cut. Do we have a seconder?
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you councillor Hall. Do you wish to speak to your motion councillor?
No, Madam Mayor, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I think just, uh, the, uh, situation having gone through COVID, we've got to learn from it. The, uh, opportunities for us, if it is going to be a long-going, uh, situation so that, um, it's just automatic. If we go back into some sort of situation, this just becomes automatic and we've already got a policy and a procedure in place and we know what is going to be happening. I think it takes a lot of guesswork out of it for both people, both the, uh, the staff and perhaps even the constituents. And, um, it just gives us some certainty about the way forward.
Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. Question four is in the name of councillor Caliander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, firstly, thank you to the staff for the very thorough response. Um, I just have a couple of questions and a potential notice of motion. Um, firstly, and, uh, you may need to take these questions on notice. Um, firstly, in terms of the, um, the, the large infestations of the, uh, of this particular weed, um, it references what best practice requires. Um, given our current level of resourcing, is council able to maintain this best practice approach, uh, is that? Uh, because I noticed later in the response, it, it mentions that we're not actually meeting that currently.
Through the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, the situation in city pre, in city presentation, um, councillor is that, uh, we will maintain best practice approaches, but that will be of limited, uh, scope simply because of the, the, uh, lack of staff required to do that on a, on a much broader basis. Um, this is something that will form part of the overall review of, of the city presentation department, um, which we are initiating, um, and we'll bring that back with a view to promote best practice across the entire operations, uh, of the department itself, as well as the specific individual areas.
Okay, thank you. You have another question councillor?
I do, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, the, one of the other questions I have is, um, the, it references the cost of reactive works. Is there, um, has there been any work done or any costing done of what proactive works would cost council?
Through the CEO.
We may have to take that on notice councillor, but I'll ask Mr Diplos anyway.
Thank you, thank you, uh, through the, uh, CEO. Uh, we'll have to take that on notice. I, I don't believe we have, but I'll have to te, check with our biosecurity team and, um, and confirm.
Sure. Um, and my other question is, um, just in relation to plans of management and operate the operational management programme. Um, is that something that is going to be, um, part of the invasive pest management strategy that's due to come before council next week, next year, I think it is?
Mr Diplos?
I'll, I'll take that on notice and talk to the team, uh, excuse me, through the CEO. I'll take that on notice and talk to the team and come back to you with a, a definitive response, so.
Sure. Um, and in terms of, so in terms of questions on, um, on notice following this, um, if we don't, um, if those plans of management and operational management programme are not part of the, um, the strategy that's due to come before council, um, can we get an idea of what, what those are needed and an idea of the scope of resourcing or extra resourcing that council might need um, in relation to management of some of these, these invasive species of fauna? Sorry flora, flora, getting my Latin mixed up.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have a notice of motion or motion councillor?
No, just, um, probably I will wait for those questions to come back before.
Thank you, next one. The next one's in your name as well councillor.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm happy with this response. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And councillor Hagerty?
Uh, I eagerly await the response.
All right. Have we got any presentation from councillors? None? So the next item is NOM O one on page two eighteen. In the name of councillor Rhodes.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, I'm happy for, um, for a report to come back on this. It's just that I am feeling that I missed the, uh, when it should have been brought up, which is when we were talking about Fogo and, uh, everything like that. And it's just that, um, And it's just that because it hasn't been addressed, I'm just, I'm looking forward to the review back from council. In regards, I believe that they have considered it, but I'd like to see it tabled at council so that we all understand it has been considered. So happy to wait for that. I know that move the motion that council bring back to November council meeting, just move the motion as is.
Okay. All right then. Seconder? Oh, second, councillor Deputy Mayor. Is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. The next item is on page two two one. In the name of councillor Caliander.
Sorry, I should probably take myself off mute before I start speaking. Thank you, madam mayor. So as I sort of put forward at the last council meeting, there was a petition of over seven hundred residents to put forward this initiative. And having seen the proposal that the residents have come up with and some of the work that they have been discussing with council staff already, it is something I think that will really help bring community members together, help with community healing, which we so sorely need at the moment. The thing, one, I would like to add one additional point to the notice of motion, if I may, which is to include a point three to communicate. It's in, to communicate details of this initiative across our social media and website. Because I think one of the things we as a council have been trying to promote for a number of years is to have residents and community members have ownership over ideas on how we can make our, you know, our area better. This is one such initiative where residents have, have really been proactive and said, here's what we want to do, here's where we see a gap. And I think that this could function as a really useful example to encourage other residents to do the same and to bring their counsel to realise these initiatives and basically multiply the resources that we have to bring this together. So, yeah, I think.
Okay, I'll take that as moving and also speaking too.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor.
I just need to ask the C E O a question before, just more or less about process. I think it's a great sort of project. I personally think it's quite cute. But are there any environmental issues with this?
Yeah, there were. Madam mayor, the report indicates in the penultimate paragraph, there are some concerns that have been expressed. Mr Diplos will be able to further advise us on that.
Yes, through the C E O.
We have had similar concerns in other areas recently, as councillors will be aware of. Mr Diplos?
Yes, thank you. Through the C E O, there is some, I mean, to get down to the nitty-gritty, I'd have to take it on notice because again, we don't have an environmental specialist here tonight who unfortunately couldn't make it. So I'd have to take that on notice and provide the breakdown details of the impacts to the environment.
Can I suggest councillor Caliander, maybe your point one be formally support the development of Fairy Glen at Harris Park Reserve where there are no environmental conflicts?
Madam mayor.
Madam mayor, sorry.
Hold on, councillor Rhodes, please. Yes, councillor Caliander?
So if I can just add to, add to what I said previously. Currently, the residents who have, who've been sort of working with council on this initiative just today had a meeting with people from community and culture and staff from the environmental team as well. They're very conscious of having this initiative be as environmentally sustainable as possible to use it as a tool to educate young people within our community about environmental impacts and those sorts of things. So there is a real recognition of minimizing any impacts of this initiative on the local environment. And so I believe that, you know, that addition would be in keeping with the, the sort of the idea and the energy of what the residents are bringing to the table here.
There should be inclusion of no after there are no environmental conflicts. I think it's better than having it running and that way everybody's clear. Even, I think everybody sees it as a, you know, really cute project. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, madam mayor, I'm happy to second this motion with slight amendments to the motion if it's appropriate for councillor Caliander. And the, the motion that I would change is that formally support in principle the development of the Fairy Glen at Harris Creek Reserve. And then number two is continue to engage with the, and then cross out the representatives, cross out that bit with the community to further explore the proposal, discuss opportunities and constraints. The residents' capacity to manage the activity and council's role and levels of support. And provide a report back to the November meeting in regards to the further investigations and assessments by council. I too think that it's great to be able to see the community engaged. And I think that I'm in support of councillor Caliander's motion from that, that perspective. But I also take note of the information supplied by council in their correspondence back to councillors. And I think that motion is probably the motion that we need, need to move on from here, that council continues their discussion and engagement with the community. And they sort it all out. And let's hopefully think that this, this is a good thing that can happen.
Councillor Caliander, are you happy with those additions?
Would the typist be able to scroll down so I can just read the amendment, madam mayor?
Continue to engage with the community to further explore the proposal, discuss opportunities and constraints, the residents' capacity to manage the activity and council's role and potential level of support and to provide a report back to the November meeting in regards to further investigation and assessment of council.
Look, considering that this work is already happening behind the scenes, is already taking place between residents community members and, and staff, I don't, you know, I don't have any opposition to the amendment, no.
Okay, all right then. So the mover is happy to adopt those. So there's the point one that says formally supporting principle the development of fairy glen where there are no environmental conflicts. To continue to work, engage with representatives identified by the authors of the petition at the September meeting. And, or, wait a minute, no, two's been replaced.
Been replaced.
Another one, which we just read out, and three to communicate these initiatives across Liverpool council's social media and website. We have a move and a second. Are there any objections? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next item's on page.
Sorry, madam mayor, can we record it as unanimous?
Yes, unless somebody wants to vote against it. I didn't hear any peeps. So I would say unanimous. Okay, next item's on page one five six. No, it's not. Yes, it is. No, it's not. I've got the wrong page. I've lost my page. Oh no. Sorry. Somehow or other, I flipped the page.
Two, three, madam mayor.
Oh, just out of practice, this.
Two, two, three.
Yes, yes, I'm, thank you. I'm conscious of that. I've got my page back.
While, while you're looking for it. Can I request that this item be moved to, after the queue, I think it's question with notice two, oh no, sorry, comp. Comp oh one.
Yes, I'm happy to do that as the chair. No worries.
Sorry, compo two, compo two. So essentially, we discussed the two confidential questions in regards to it.
All right. No worries. It's done. Next item is normo four on page two three five.
Yep, that's me again. I didn't put any background to this one, but in speaking to my fellow councillors, I wanted to know what this was all about. Essentially, I, we saw what happened with the former premier and there was a lot of opinion and a lot of people using it as an opportunity to have a go at ICAC. I, and essentially, this is a motion that says, we, you know, ICAC is good and we should have an ICAC. We've seen what's happened, you know, with, with the former premier and that's ongoing. We saw a member of the Labour Party go to jail during the week. So this is not party polit, this is not party political at all. It's, it's basically if you, you know, if you're found guilty of corruption, whether you're in Labour, Liberal, Greens, Independent, you're a member of the public service. We should have a strong organisation that investigates that and, 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 you know, follows doing it. And if they're found guilty, they should be thrown in jail or whatever, whatever court decides. So not trying to be party political here. I just thought it would be worth noting, given all the opinion and rankle around ICAC, that we move a motion in support of it.
Okay, do we have a seconder?
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next item's.
Is that unanimous, madam mayor?
If anybody objects, please say so now. No, it's unanimous. Page two three six. And that's in the name of councillor Haggerty again.
Me again. Okay, I think it was July last year, I put forward a question with notice and then subsequently a motion, the state government merged all the parklands trusts into one mega, mega trust, as you'd call it. They've now put a bill out for, you know, people to make submissions on. And I just think we should push back on this for a number of reasons. One, we now have one trust. We're told that Western Sydney Parklands is Western Sydney's backyard. Why you would have it overseen by a board, it's got a bunch of people from the eastern suburbs and, and Parramatta for that, for that regard, the inner west overseeing it, I don't think that's a good idea. I think we should have people from Western Sydney looking after Western Sydney's backyard. So that's one point. The other is that, my understanding is that Western Sydney Parklands is actually quite profitable. And I don't know if the guarantees in the bill are strong enough to protect that profit from staying with the parklands. Who's to say it won't now go fund a new McDonald's on the corner of Centennial Park or what, whatever. So I'm a bit concerned about this bill. I know we had a fight a couple of years ago about putting a motor oil facility and industrial, you know, industrial zoning on, on western Sydney parklands. Western Sydney Parklands was a bit of a sanctuary for lots of us during lockdown. It was, you know, I'm thankful that it was within my five kilometre radius. And sometimes it gets a bit claustrophobic day in, day out in your little home office and, and going. And, you know, you go to Western Sydney Parklands and within five minutes you could be in the middle of the bush anywhere in Australia and it's a good place to get away. We need to protect that. You know, we have some great facilities there. We need to protect those and not potentially put them in the hands of private enterprise. So I've actually changed the motion and there we go. Good work. You got it ahead of time. Well done. Thank you, George. Essentially, it's, we're still asking for the four-week extension and we're still asking for a briefing. But we're also asking that council make a submission in regards to the bill and that that bill, that submission have at least these two points. One is that we, there's, there's talk in the bill about a community trustee board to oversee the specific parks in addition to the board that looks after it. I'd like to make sure that the Western Sydney Parklands has its own community trustee board. And that perhaps council hasn't, you know, gets to appoint a member to that board. We're a major stakeholder. It takes up a big chunk of our L G A. Every time they want to build something in there, they come asking us, knocking on the door for us to fund it. So I think that's a reasonable request. I'm happy to wordsmith it if people aren't happy with it. And the second one is, I've been chatting with this about people, you know, who use the park quite a bit. No one knows this is happening. It's, you know, sort of was put out right as we opened up around COVID. Everyone was concentrating on that. And I don't think the public are informed enough about what's happening here and what could potentially happen to our beautiful parkland. So I think it's incumbent on council to promote the fact this bill's out for submission and to encourage people to make a submission one way or another. But there we go.
Okay, that's moving and speaking to it.
That was a movie speaking.
Sorry, councillor Rhodes, you're seconding, are you?
Yes, I'm trying to. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask, is there any opposition?
Just a question if I can.
Yep.
In support of the motion, so it's not in relation to the actual parklands that go through Liverpool L G A. Do we have a list of wish list items that we'd like to see through the parklands?
I'll ask the C E O for that.
Thanks, madam mayor. No, we don't, councillor, is the short answer to that. But we are in regular contact with Sue Ellen Fitzgerald and her colleagues. And we seek to exploit every opportunity for partnership with them that we can. But that's a great idea actually and one that we can bring to Sue Ellen. I would add on a point of information for councillors. The mayor and I were briefed by Sue Ellen, a member of the minister's office yesterday. They have confirmed that they will be available for the councillor briefing session on the eighteenth of November. And I would encourage you to continue the dialogue with us. They have, they shared a lot of information with us and I'm happy to talk to councillors about that.
And also they added regardless of what, you know, the outcome of what we're resolving. They may operate under certain restraints in regards to exhibition period, but they will still take on board issues after that period if they need to.
So just thanks, mayor, thanks, C E O. So in relation to that, is it worthwhile putting a list together?
Yep, absolutely.
I think that's what the C E O is saying we're going to do.
Okay, sorry, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any opposition?
Just, sorry, sorry, before we put it, just a point there. So I guess have we, I didn't realise that you, that the mayor and C E O had a, had a meeting yesterday. But have we, I guess, are we resolving a position here as a council? Are we imposing the bill or is this basically what we're doing right now, I guess?
Well, you're saying that we're looking at a community trustee board and when we spoke to them yesterday ironically, we raised that very issue and said almost word perfect what you said. They were very, I think, positive in regards to taking that on board. They want a board that's a mixture. They don't want it just, you know, various politicians or people from certain suburbs not far afield from here. But I think if we make this particular decision tonight, it's still okay, I think, in regards to telling them what we think. We aren't going to be the total manager of this project. It's out of our bellywick, as they say. But we will have a, if we have a position, that's fine. There's no issue with that.
Yeah, happy for that to be.
Because I, I mean, we raised these concerns with them and they, they were quite genuine in their responses. And, and they understand, you know, the angst, I suppose is the right word.
Madam mayor, if I may just, one often puzzled me is that the, the lack of local consideration or ability to be able to have input into the parkland that actually travels through the L G A, like Liverpool L G A. And, and take for instance, the tourist attractions. And I've spoken to Sue Ellen and been into, into the Sydney, the, the Western Sydney parklands as it was then. And said, well, why can't we have a tourism operation in the Liverpool sector? And the answer was, no, we want to put that all up in the northern part of the parklands, out of our Liverpool L G A. And, you know, okay, that might be the, what they've decided. But, you know, I think that it isn't fair. But I think Liverpool should have more say about its parkland that goes through its Liverpool L G A. So I'm in great support of councillor Haggerty's work he's done on this.
Thank you. I'd ask the C E O, if he wishes to make any comments?
Thanks, madam mayor. It might be helpful if I, if I just summarised elements of that conversation, madam mayor, with your permission.
Yeah, go ahead.
And in response to councillor. Um, and in response to councillor Haggerty, um, we take the point about the, the four week consultation process. Um, the officer from the minister's office confirmed that that was, it comes at the end of a, a fifteen month process that goes back to the white paper that, uh, councillor Haggerty referred to previously. Um, but that short term four week period at the end of that is being driven by the parliamentary timeframes with the debate due to commence on the fifteenth of December. Um, in terms of the representation, the proposal in terms of the architecture is that you would have a community trustee board, which as the mayor has pointed out, would be skills based, they would be experts and would look at that overarching strategic, uh, provision of green space across Greater Sydney, um, rather than individual elements of that and extending beyond Western Sydney parklands down to Wyanomata Creek over a period of decades. Um, that would be augmented for each of the specific parks, um, with a local trustee board who would be comprised of people from and representative of the community. And the mayor and I talked about how we could engage with council and indeed the likes of the children's parliament to have a better representation and range of voices being heard around the future plans for the, the parklands. Um, in terms of the business model, um, Sue Ellen Fitzgerald advised that, um, while they were fortunate to have that space and the opportunity in having physical space within the parklands, um, it assisted to meet their legislative requirements in terms of being self funding. Um, but again, the issue around would that funding be spread across other parks? I would suggest that's one for the, the councillor briefing session. Um, what they were keen to say was that, um, the bill includes protections that weren't there previously. Um, it tries to build on, on best practice. Uh, and the example that they gave was in terms of overshadowing, um, where you have parks in C B Ds, uh, and the bill would actually protect those parks from being, from overshadowing in terms of potential developments. So it was a very, uh, productive conversation and, um, I would obviously encourage councillors to attend and participate in the, the briefing session, uh, on the eighteenth. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, sorry, just, I know we're sort of doing this a bit on the fly, apologies, but in light of the fact that I guess we don't have an answer as to whether money raised in Western Sydney parklands will or won't be used to, I don't know, Cowan Park or, you know, any other park in Sydney, can we add that as an additional point in that makes a submission? Point?
Yeah, well, yep, yep.
Um, so, but yeah, third point, makes us, that includes safeguards, uh, that any income generated from Western Sydney parklands, um, is spent on Western Sydney parklands.
Yep. Okay, I think that's pretty clear. I think it's a work in progress in one sense, um, not that simple, I know, but, uh, there's a lot of goodwill there councillors, can I say? Okay, is there any questions? Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against declared carried. I'm going to move all the items in our confidential items into a confidential session because it's just, I think that'd be easier and then we'll resume back into open council at the conclusion rather than try and sort through what we'll do publicly and what we won't. So we're now going to close council where the decisions in closed councils would be read. The first item, um, item compo one and compo two were collapsed into one item and the motion read that council investigates funding sources including state and federal government programmes for the purchase of all land north of Sirius and Voyager Point currently zoned E three environment, environmental management, approves the necessary funding to obtain an independent valuation of the three passes of land zoned E three environmental management, notes the further report will be brought back to council upon completion of the valuations and funding investigations to confirm if funding is available to proceed with the offer of purchase. Investigate through zoning one Sirius Road Lot sixty eight, seventy five Sirius Road, Voyager Point from E three to environmental management to E two environmental conservation if it's purchased by a public authority. Subject to point four directs the C E O to prepare a planning proposal to rezone one Sirius Road and Lot sixty eight and seventy five Sirius Road, Voyager Point to E two environmental conservation. Six, notes that any planning proposal to require to be considered by the Liverpool local planning panel before a decision by council on whether to endorse the planning proposal for a gateway determination by the Department of Planning, Industry and Environment. The next, while rights to state government to support on site the designation as a strategic conservative area at council right to the New South Wales Minister for the Environment requesting consideration be given to the New South Wales Government purchasing the properties identified in this report for inclusion in the New South Wales National Park Estate or as a nature reserve. Nine, the petition be sent along with other representations to the state government and that was carried. The next item on the agenda was, um, comp O three and the recommendation approves the commencement of road closure, oops, it's gone, it's moving as fast as it came back, approves the commencement of the road closure process of part of Handwell Service Way, part of Macquarie Streets, Elizabeth Street, Liverpool is outlined in confidential report, notes the public notification process was also involves the notification of relative of thor-, service authorities and New South Wales Crown Land will be undertaken, approves to classify the land compromising any land area of closed road area as operational land pursuant to section forty three of the Roads Act nineteen ninety three. Four, authorises the C E O or his delegate officer to be executed any documents under power of attorney necessary to give effect to this decision, resolves that a further report be made to council upon completion of the road closure consultation process prior to any proposed sale or land swap progressing. And six, keeps this report confidential pursuant to positions under section ten A two C of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three as this information would have disclosed confer a commercial advantage on a person or whom council's conducting or proposes to conduct business. It was carried. The next item is comp O four. And here it comes, the recommendation be adopted. That was an easy one. And then there was the next one, compo five. The council receives and notes the assessment of heritage significance prepared by former architects of ten Hoxton Park Road, Liverpool, not proceed with the planning proposal to list ten Hoxton Park Road Liverpool as an item of local heritage significance in schedule five of the Liverpool Local Environment Plan two thousand and eight, revoke the interim heritage order issued on ten Hoxton Park Road Liverpool effective from the next available New South Wales Government Gazette and notify the landowner of council's decision. Next item. That council in accordance with section fifty five three up one of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three approves deferring the public contesting of the provision of maintenance of off street and on street parking machines for a period of six months ending on the thirty first of May twenty twenty two and Reno international proprietary limit to continue delivering the current maintenance of off street at on street pa- pa- parking machines until the next tender is awarded at thirty first of March twenty twenty two. The next item is that council accepts the tenders from the recommended tenderers of tender R C L thirty to seventy, supply of library materials for initial three years contract term with the option of extending two by twelve months on the schedule rates G S T inclusive as contained in the submissions. Two, makes public its decision regarding tender R R C L thirty seventy, supply of library materials and three, notes that the chief executive officer will finalise all details and sign the letter of acceptance following the publication of the draft minutes of council's website for the tender, giving it contractual effect in accordance with delegated authority. Keeps confidential the details supplied in this report containing information on submissions received pursuant to the provisions of section ten A two D one of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three as it contains commercial information as a commercial nature that would have disclosed prejudice of commercial position of the person who supplied it. And that was adopted. And being there is no further. One thing I would like to say at the, um, end of this meeting, I was asked, um, and one of our regional, I think it was at the regional group or somewhere, what the death rate in the Liverpool area or the, the region has been in this local la- last Covid thing and it's over a hundred and sixty seven souls. And with that, I would like to close the meeting and please ensure everybody stays safe. Thank you.